Grocery license at another point, which he operated from approximately 2010 to 2014. He did discover, however, that without the ability to sell tobacco, and he has other convenience stores and has experience in this industry, he wasn't able to succeed and was forced to close the business. It just wasn't successful. I also want to emphasize, my client has put a lot into this project and into this property. When he purchased it, it had been vacant for some time. It had previously been an office of a plumbing business. Its windows had all been eliminated. It was boarded up. It was unsightly, and it was in no way an asset to this neighborhood. He's since opened it all back up, reinstored the eyes on the street, as it were, and would really like to move forward with something that would be a neighborhood asset. The reason I mention this is that you might have the impression from the staff report that if this project doesn't move forward, that there's any of a number of other retail businesses that could be viable in this location. And the track record of the property is such that that simply isn't the case. Someone did try in the early 2000s to run a convenience store there. It's my understanding that withdrew their application without ever even opening. So this is a property that has seen little in terms of successful economic activity in many, many years. The second issue, Mr. Hanauer mentioned that there was support from the neighborhood organization. I don't know how recently you got the letter, but it's my understanding the neighborhood organization met late last week. Its board voted unanimously to support the rezoning of this property. And if you'll indulge me, I'd like to just read two sentences of the letter. The executive director writes, "The specified use of this location is in keeping with the neighborhood organization's goals for economic investment that benefit residents in the neighborhood and along the corridor. Residents in the single-family homes on the blocks surrounding this location have no access to grocery products and leave the area to destinations in Brooklyn Center and elsewhere." And again, that was unanimous support from the neighborhood organization. My client has also circulated a petition in the neighborhood and collected 300 signatures from folks living right around the store who'd really like to see a store on this location. I understand that didn't make it into the packet, but I'll provide a copy of those signatures to Mr. Hanauer. Lastly, I just want to touch briefly on this issue about compatibility with the comprehensive plan. We had a question about that. Probably goes without saying, but the entire analysis in the staff report, and I understand that this is the proper way to do it, but focuses on uses that could happen if this rezoning is permitted. And there's no analysis of whether my client's intended use of the property would be compatible with its guiding. It's our position, as I've set forth in the application materials, that it is highly consistent with the goals of increasing walkability, livability, and so forth in the neighborhood. Understand this probably isn't possible, but my client would be willing, if it were, to limit this rezoning simply to allow this specific use. And if some future owner wanted to conduct some other use that requires C2 zoning, they'd have to come in and seek additional approvals. Again, I don't see a mechanism in the zoning ordinance to do that, but he would if it were possible. One thing that might be possible is there is a pedestrian overlay district five blocks to the west. If that were extended, which my client would agree to, to his property, that would eliminate the possibility of all these automotive uses that the staff report is concerned about. I hope I met my five minutes' deadline.
All right. Thank you. Commissioners, are there any questions? Commissioner Madrino?
Is the applicant here? I guess I just had a general question, and I don't think it was covered. So without the tobacco sales, what is the viability of your proposed business?
Well, historically, I mean, tobacco sales count for about 40% of the convenience or the smaller store scale. When I first approached the city on this, and this is recently, around last May, I'm aware that we have a high school there, so I actually asked for a restricted license. But I'm not carrying loose tobacco or other products. It's just a basic line. And based on it, they actually said that would be viable.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any further questions of the applicant? There are none. We can move on to some other speakers. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak on this item? Yes, please state your name and address for the record, and please keep your remarks to know.
My name is Jim Kane. I live on 5151 Russell Avenue North, Minneapolis. I'm here as a character witness for Kevin. He's, I'm a president of the Camden Lions locally, involved a lot of community organizations. And Kevin's been a member for quite some time of our organization. He's a member on the Weber Camden Board. You couldn't find a better guy to have run a business in your community. He's already opened with a partner another store, which now he's been bought out of that, so he's going to go on his own with this venture at 44th and James. And, you know, the community backs this. I mean, because Kevin's well-known. This is the kind of guy who runs a store and goes down the street when it snows, and to the old ladies in the neighborhood and shows their woks. I mean, he cleans up the neighborhood. He's good for the neighborhood. You know, like I said, he's involved in all kinds of things. Kids programs, things we do at the high school with the Lions. I mean, you couldn't ask for a better guy, and I just would really like you guys to approve this for him. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak on this item? Oh, Commissioner Lupe here.
I had a question for the last speaker, actually, though.
All right.
Hi, I have a question for you. Yeah, real quick, if you don't mind. So it seems like this Kevin guy's a nice guy, and certainly the letters in the packet seem like he's a nice guy, and the article in the paper seems like a nice guy. But what happens to the next owner when it's zoned C2 and we're putting in automobile use then because it's zoned, his zoning is forever?
If you're thinking that this facility would be changed into an automotive, I don't know if you're...
I don't know about automotive, but it'd get any number of things that would be allowed under C2.
Right, right, right. Because wasn't something mentioned there that we could extend another zone and prohibit that as well? I mean, that's definitely not Kevin's interest in to make this into a retail space. I realize 20 years from now, who knows? Maybe that could be addressed in that method. You know, I can attest to Kevin and his intentions. And as far as the community, I don't know that anybody's looking pie out 20 years, you know. It's really not an area. I know you guys have it as a community right-of-way or road, but really, it is anchored by businesses at one end at the Penn intersection, and then we've got Weber Park at the far other end. But in between there, we're going to have a brand-new grocery store going in. So really, to say whether it's community or commerce, it's kind of anchored on either end by commerce. The new library's going in at one end with a grocery store. Kevin would be up a ways little. Then you got the high school, and then a whole nother business node along 44th Avenue.
So my question is, if it ended up being any number of other things that are permitted, we can't just single-handedly strike out the ones you guys don't want. Once it's zoned C2, anything allowed under C2 is allowed. I mean, is your neighborhood, are you, as a resident, fine with whatever might happen?
I think because knowing the space, I don't think you're ever going to put anything that would be heavy, like maybe somebody would use it for a plumbing store or something like that. I mean, but the space isn't really conducive, if you're familiar with it, even if you mowed it down, to even fit in a garage or something heavy-duty industrial like that that would be offensive to the neighborhood. There just isn't a big enough plot there for anything like that. So I don't think it's any major concern, no.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Is there anyone else who would like to speak on this item? Yes. Please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, my name is Laura Ross. I live at 4315 Irving Avenue North. And I lived for 20, 25 years in Stewart neighborhood in South Minneapolis. It's wonderful to get around. It's, we all know what a great vibrant neighborhood it is, and we all know how we're struggling on the north side, which I've lived up there about four years now. I live a block from the property that Kevin wants to open the convenience store. And I'm also aware of the convenience store that he started at 42nd and Fremont. He's a wonderful, wonderful manager. He's a great neighbor. And so I have to reiterate a little bit of what the last speaker said. And I understand your concerns about future zoning and how the neighborhood might react. But the neighborhood right now is reacting to the needs that we have. Every time we talk about something on the north side, it's, well, something's going on Broadway. And you don't seem to realize that between Brooklyn Center and Broadway, all the rest of us live. So we wholeheartedly welcome any retailer who is going to be providing jobs, who provides things that we need, that, as someone else said, we don't want to go to Brooklyn Center to spend our money. We want to spend it with a good guy who helps out the neighborhood. We trust him. He provides great security. We think he'll run a great business. And I hope that you'll consider all of that. When you consider that, that's why so many in my community sign the petition, is because we know Kevin, we trust him, and we want this type of business there. We want many, many other businesses, too, but they're slow coming, and we'd like to see this one come in. Thank you.
Commissioner Lupe here.
Hi, I have a question for you, too. Ma'am? Hi, I have a question for you, too. Sorry. I'm more interested in all things north. So what is the need that you're, you kept talking about, we need this type of business? What is this type of business that you're referring to?
To be able to get something that you need without, you know, driving or walking a couple of miles. We have also a very extraordinarily high bus ridership population, probably the highest in the city. So to have a place where you can just stop over and pick up bread or whatever. I know everyone talks about tobacco sales and how high they are and how they are important to a retailer. But I also know that, you know, for example, in Kevin's, at the 42nd Street convenience store, it's, people buy everything. They aren't just hoarding in there to buy cigarettes. It's bread, milk, ice cream, or maybe they're open on holiday when you can't get to somewhere else.
So do you think that a new grocery store that your other neighbor mentioned might impact that at all, or no?
It's a different type of thing, and they have limited hours. It's not opening until, what, 2017, or something like that?
And then, and then his other store being three blocks away doesn't change the fact that you have, you still have this need for this store here?
I don't think so. I think a convenience store is a great option for our neighborhood.
Thank you.
All right. Is there anyone else who would like to speak on this item? If there's no one, I'll close the public hearing. Mr. Hanauer, do you have a clarification?
I mentioned Commissioner Rockwell's question about the licensing history. And there was a, in 2003, there was a tobacco license that was applied for, but it was withdrawn. So that, for the site, so in the history that I found, there was not a tobacco license.
All right. Okay, the public hearing is now closed. Commissioner Kronzer?
I just have another question for Aaron, or maybe for Jason. I'm assuming the PO district, those have to be contiguous, but the PO, pedestrian overlay district has to be...
Commissioner Kronzer, it's not required that a pedestrian-oriented overlay district be part of a broader district. However, I can't think of a situation off the top of my head where a similarly situated property to this one, commercially-zoned property, has a pedestrian-oriented overlay district and nothing nearby does.
Okay. Are there any further questions, or would someone like to start us off with a motion? Commissioner Bender?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm happy to move staff's recommendation to deny the rezoning. If I can comment.
All right. Let's see if there is a second.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, you know, I'm appreciative of the folks who came to testify, and it sounds like this is a great business owner. You know, rezonings are pretty significant decisions, and I think in this case, the point that Commissioner Lupe made is really important, which is that, you know, in order to rezon for just one use here, you know, really, it's a rezoning that sticks with the property over time. And so there are lots of commercial uses allowed in C1. So I think the case that staff made in their staff report is sound, and so that's why I made the motion.
Is there any further discussion? And I'll just add, I would have similar concerns. This is a designated community corridor, 44th Avenue is. And really, our precedent has not been to allow changes to higher, more intense C zoning on those types of corridors, since it is intended for smaller-scale commercial uses and more residential uses. So I would have some concerns. That said, you know, I don't personally think that tobacco sales is that problematic at that location. That's maybe more a city licensing issue, but I would have some concern going to C2. So if there is no further discussion, we'll...
Bender?
Aye.
Gagnon?
Aye.
Kronzer?
Aye.
Lupe here?
Aye.
Madrino?
Nay.
Rockwell?
Neigh.
Slack?
Aye.
Freeland?
No.
So that is five to three.
All right. And that motion carries. Concludes our discussion on item number three. Our next item for discussion is item six, the Moxie Uptown, 1121 West Lake Street. Staff is Kimberly Holley.
Good evening, Commissioners. The application before you is a series of applications for what's being called the Moxie Hotel at 1121 West Lake Street and 3005 Emerson Avenue South. The required applications include a rezoning from the C2 Neighborhood Corridor Commercial District to the C3A Community Activity Center District, a conditional use permit to increased height in the C3A District from four stories or 56 feet to six stories 72.5 feet, a variance to increase the maximum floor area ratio from 2.7 to 3.78, a variance to reduce the east rear yard setback from 15 feet to zero, and that would be the yard adjacent to the alley, a variance to reduce the front yard setback requirement along Emerson Avenue South from 15 feet to zero, and that is just as it relates to the south 25 feet of the lot, a variance to reduce the minimum loading requirement from one large space to zero, and site plan review for the construction of a six-story hotel building with 123 rooms. As you can see here, the property is zoned C2 currently. It's not cooperating with me. There we go. So outlined here in the bold, it's at the intersection of Emerson Avenue South and West Lake Street. The site is currently, contains a two-story commercial building. This is not going to, there we go, that's located at the corner of Emerson and Lake Street, and then a large surface parking lot. Again, here we have... Let me see if I can get this to actually cooperate with me. There, okay. So here, current photos of the property. You've got the building up at the corner, and then surface parking to the back and to the east. Here's an aerial shot of the site. Again, you can see the lot at 3005 Emerson is completely surface parking right now. And then the majority of the property that fronts along Lake Street is surface parking. The current building footprint is about 1,200 square feet. This project was before you last summer, at the end of the summer, I believe. And at that time, it was a nine-story hotel building that was completely concentrated along Lake Street with a smaller footprint. So the applicant has met with the neighborhood several times since then, and as a result of those conversations, the project has changed to a six-story building with a larger footprint. So you'll see here, the building still cannibers over a parking area on the south side of the building, so the majority of the height is still up along West Lake Street, but the footprint has about doubled from what you saw before. The surface parking spaces on the back, there are five of them. Those are intended primarily for short-term parking, and then there's also a valet drop-off in that location. The building has a commercial space on the ground floor. That would be a restaurant use. That's primarily a neighborhood-serving-type restaurant, but also serve hotel guests. And the hotel lobby's on the first floor. And then above there, there's 123 guest rooms. So here's what the building looks like now as far as the exterior. The first application before you is the rezoning from the C2 District to the C3A District. The first finding we need to make in the rezoning is consistency with the comprehensive plan. This right here is the future land use map for the site. So again, the site is outlined in bold. That orange line along West Lake Street is indicating that West Lake Street is a commercial corridor in this location. The maroon line over here is the outline of the Activity Center at Hennepin and Lake Street. And then off the screen to the east is the Lynn Lake Activity Center. So the first finding, consistency with the comprehensive plan. The site is on a commercial corridor. It's 1.5 blocks east of the Activity Center at Hennepin and Lake, and about three blocks west of the Activity Center at Lynn Lake. While it's outside the Activity Center, that does not mean it's inconsistent with a comprehensive plan to have C3A zoning in this location. General policies for commercial corridors talk about maintaining strong and successful commercial and mixed-use areas, or this is just general commercial policies, with a wide range of character and functions to serve the needs of current and future users, preserving the stability and diversity of the city's neighborhoods while accommodating increased density. Policies for commercial corridors call for development that enhances the street character, fosters pedestrian movement, expands the range of goods and services available, and then generally calls for a mix of uses with active uses on the ground floor and a minimum height of two stories. In this case, we also have an adopted small area plan. This is in the study area of the Uptown Small Area Plan. This graphic that you're looking at here is showing the character areas of the small area plan. So the site is located here on the south side of Lake Street in this orange here, which is designated as the urban village, and the plan refers to this as the south sub-area of the urban village. This, the site is outlined here, showing preferred mixed use on the site, which is the red hash mark. And then south of the site, it's calling for medium-density housing. As far as policies go, there are many, many small area plan policies outlined in your staff reports. I am actually going to go through some of them here, just as part of the presentation. So first of all, the introduction of the Uptown Small Area Plan, there are many broad policies, one of them being prioritizing streets, such as Lake Street, as places for social interaction and urban activity instead of just conduits for through traffic. And it accepts the dual role of Uptown as a regional attraction and a local community. When talking about growth, it talks about defining the edges of new growth and shaping the edges of new growth such that transitions to the neighborhoods are clear and predictable. So this is the urban village character area, again, the south sub-area. Just generally in this area, it's calling for residential development that includes a high number of rentals. That's not really applicable to this project. But the urban village was envisioned as an area, initially, it was immediately north of the Greenway and then extended further south. The recommended uses here were for mixed use and residential with a preferred height of three to five stories, with opportunities for taller buildings up to 84 feet on major corridors. It talks about focusing growth in areas where it's most appropriate, such as where surface parking dominates sites, which is the case on this current site. As noted, it's primarily surface parking, with the exception of a 1,200-square-foot building footprint. It encourages mixed use along Lake Street to connect Uptown and Lynn Lake. It calls for establishing, through use and design, strong gradual transitions between residential and commercial areas, locating the tallest buildings along corridors. Again, this is a commercial corridor. Further down, when it's talking about the character areas in the urban village, it's talking about this area being a dense district with a variety of building heights. Development south of the Greenway should be high-density mixed use. New development south of the Greenway should be encouraged to maintain the existing community-oriented retail and incorporating those uses into more dense urban buildings. Restaurants are permitted in the urban village. And here, it talks about hotels. So the application before you is for a hotel. That is the reason why C3A zoning is needed here. And it asks that hotels be located in the Activity Center. This property is outside of the Activity Center. You may recall, this summer, we brought before you a text amendment on hotels. As part of that text amendment, staff was recommending that hotels with 20 rooms or greater, which is a new category, be allowed in the C2 District, which is the current zoning on the property. As part of that analysis, we determined that hotels on commercial corridors were completely appropriate uses that were needed to serve the city, expand the goods and services that were available on commercial corridors, and with the specific development standards we put in place, would have no detrimental impact on surrounding uses. Unfortunately, even though you approved that C2 allowance for hotels of 20 rooms or more, when that text amendment went to council, that was removed. So now, under the current zoning code, hotels are still only allowed with 20 rooms or more in the C3A District or greater. So staff had previously made a policy decision based on the information that was before us at that time, that a commercial corridor would be an appropriate place for a hotel, and that's before you again tonight. Just talking a little bit more again about the urban village. New development should have retail at grade on Lake Street and transition in height as it turns the corner approaching the existing neighborhood. The Carrick neighborhood envisions the block between Lake Street and 31st, so this block, as an appropriate place for some lifestyle medium-density developments, particularly closer to Lake Street. As I previously mentioned, there is a medium-density area designated just south of this site to serve as a transition between the commercial on Lake Street and the low-density residential to the south. So the plan itself kind of builds in that transition space between the commercial uses on Lake and 31st. Specifically, under land use recommendations, it discourages one-story commercial buildings, encourages retail on Lake Street and Lagoon east of Hennepin, and encourages mixed-use blocks along Lake Street with the goal of improving walkability and connectivity between Uptown and Lynn Lake. So here's another look at the building. You can see the height steps down from six stories to five as you go to the south to provide that transition to the neighborhood. There's also a 17-foot setback along the south property line between the hotel and that south property line before you get to the residential uses. Finding number two under the rezoning asks whether or not the rezoning is in the public interest or solely in the interest of the property owner. In this case, staff found that the rezoning is both in the interest of the public and in the interest of the property owner. Rezoning to C3A generally encourages more active pedestrian-oriented development than what's allowed under the C2 District. It provides for type of commercial uses near land use features, such as the commercial corridor in between two activity centers. That's supported by city policy and in the public interest. Number three, whether the existing uses and zoning of property in the area are consistent with the request of rezoning. So the area surrounding the site is a mix of zoning categories here, as you can see. So the light pink here is C2. The red north of the site is C3A. So there is C3A zoning immediately adjacent to the site across Lake Street. The property to the south in the light purple is OR1. Just more generally, you can see C3A zoning is to the north and west, C2 zoning primarily along Lake Street. As you go to the south, there's R2B zoning. The area south of the site is a mix of single-family homes, duplexes, and then there's one 18-unit residential building on this lot. On the other side of Emerson Avenue South, on the block to the west, there's a townhome development, which is directly south of a block-long, two-story commercial building. On the east side here, this is a retail building that's currently being remodeled to accommodate a new retail user. The property to the north across Lake Street at 1316 West Lake Street is the Arby's with a drive-through. And then there's other mixed-use developments primarily as you go west towards the intersection of Lake and Hennepin. And as you go east down Lake towards Lynn Lake, there are some newer mixed-use buildings in here, and then it's, there's some auto-oriented uses, some smaller-scale commercial uses, and then to the south, Staff finds that the proposed rezoning from one commercial district to another would be compatible with the uses in the surrounding area. Again, it's really a variety of uses that are in the area. More generally, the properties north and west contain that C3A zoning, which is what the applicant is requesting here. Several of those C3A-zoned properties are outside of the Activity Center. Finding number four, whether there are reasonable uses of the property permitted under the existing zoning classification. So yes, there are reasonable uses allowed under the existing C2 zoning. The C2 zoning is really more of a, it's our neighborhood corridor commercial district. So I'm going to read actually verbatim what the zoning code says about C2. This is a neighborhood corridor commercial district. It's to provide an environment of retail sales and commercial services that are larger in scale than allowed in the C1 District, and to allow a broader range of automobile-related uses. So the allowance of larger commercial uses that's permitted under C2, and those audio-oriented uses that would be allowed under C2 are not consistent with the adopted policy for this area. Those auto-oriented uses would not be allowed because of the presence of the PO, but that's what the C2 is intended for. The purpose of the C3A District is to provide for the development of major urban activity and entertainment centers with neighborhood-scale retail sales and service uses. The C3A District is more consistent with the active pedestrian-oriented development that's called for in adopted policy in this area, both in the comp plan and the smaller... that's called for in adopted policy in this area, both in the comp plan and the small-area plan. While the C3A District does allow for some entertainment uses, I don't know if they were lumping hotel in as an entertainment use. It does allow for nightclubs in C3A, but I just want to point out that there is a spacing requirement from a nightclub to the boundary of any residence or office residence district, so that would not be a permitted use on this property. And there's no variance allowed for those spacing requirements. Finding number five, whether or not there's been a change in the character or trend of development in the general area since the property was put in its current zoning district. In this case, there's absolutely been a change in the trend of character. Trend and character of developments in the area. This property's been zoned commercial since 1924. That's when the city's first zoning code was adopted, so there was actually commercial development here prior to 1924. I did some digging. The first building permit I could find was for a commercial building on this property in 1909. So again, while the site's outside the Activity Center, there's been a significant change in the character of this stretch of Lake Street being that stretch that goes west from Hennepin over in the last several years, and particularly since the Uptown Small Area Plan was adopted in 2008. Just in the last several years, we've seen the Walkway Uptown Project at 1320 West Lake Street. That's a six-story mixed-use building with 92 dwelling units. Earlier this year, you approved the project at 1300 West Lake Street. That is the Chipo Site. That is a seven-story mixed-use building with 125 dwelling units. There was the project at the corner of Lake Street, or not, excuse me, Lagoon Avenue and Emerson. That's an older project. It's the Lumen Project. Again, that's a five-story mixed-use building that's fairly densely developed. We've seen changes to Calhoun Square. They do have plans for their last remaining parcel. We don't know what that is at that.